This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the June 20th, 2016 Eau Claire Area School District Board of Education meeting. I want to thank all of you for attending tonight and all of those who are watching online. I'd also like to thank Chippewa Valley Community Television for their videotaping of this school board meeting, and we post them on Board Docs on our website, so you can watch them there as well. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law that we have in Wisconsin?
Yes, we are.
Roll call for quorum, please.
Carolyn Barstudd.
Here.
Katherine Duhax.
Here.
Jennifer Fager.
Absent.
Chris Hambuck Boyle.
I'm here.
Joe Luganville.
Here.
Richard Spindler.
Here.
And Charles.
Here.
We start every meeting with a public forum. It's the part of our meeting that we open to the public. We provide a 30-minute period of time. We don't have that many people signed up tonight, so it will go quicker. But you have approximately, is it three minutes? Four minutes, and Patty puts up the timer on the screen so you can see. Please note that as board members, we are not able to interact or comment when people come up to speak for the public forum, but you need to know how grateful we are that you do come and that you do share your thoughts with your Board of Education. Certainly, we are here to serve you. So when you do come up, please state your name and your address, and the first person on our list is Darby Murphy.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Darby Murphy, and this is my husband, Eddie Vertolverdugo-Mongia. Our address is 328 West Fillmore, Eau Claire, 54701. So we are here tonight to bring to your attention an incident that happened to our son, as well as to ourselves, at an elementary school in Eau Claire. We ask you to please listen to our experience and consider making changes to current school policy so that this type of incident does not happen again to other children or their parents. It initially started when we became aware that our son had been experiencing negative interactions between himself and another classmate, and we were informed it was instigated by that other classmate. As parents who have never experienced having a child in the public school system, this was all entirely new to us. We had never imagined our son would encounter something like this in kindergarten, and we were completely surprised and somewhat overwhelmed. And so, of course, we sought help from our son's teacher. We tried to meet with her to discuss the situation as much as necessary, especially because we had started to notice some subtle changes in our son's behavior at home. We also, you know, this kind of indicated to us that the interactions with his classmate could have been negatively impacting him, and then we also noted, were told, that he began to show some of these behaviors at school, and this was really out of character for him. So we were concerned that his academic and social development were being negatively affected. We met with our son's teacher again and were informed that they were involving the school counselor to monitor any interactions between our son and the other student. That same day, while leaving the school after meeting with his teacher, we were approached by the school counselor, who began to ask us personal details about our son in a public area within the school where other people could easily overhear our conversation. We were shocked and overwhelmed that a school staff member would approach us in such a manner and try to discuss what we had considered to be private information in a public area. The entire interaction made us feel extremely uncomfortable, and we did not know what to do at that moment. We were left wondering if this was normal for the school and whether they treated all people like this.
Can I take a point of order?
Or if there was another element.
Rich.
Point of order.
Yes.
At public forums, the board is very careful in our policy about not specifying individuals criticism at our board meetings, so we'd appreciate.
I didn't say any names.
Well, it's close. So I'd just like to be careful with that.
Okay.
If we get to the policy issue, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't say any names and I didn't even say what school it was, so we expected more professional conduct from the school staff regarding privacy and treating others with respect, and left the school that day feeling uncomfortable, confused, disappointed, and saddened by how this was being handled. The following day, my husband was approached by the school counselor again in front of the school and began to discuss our son's behavior to my husband again in a public area where other parents and staff were present. My husband felt at this point that he needed to stop the conversation and told him that he wished to go into a more private area where not everybody could hear the conversation, and to please refrain from discussing these private issues regarding our son in a public area, and that if he wanted to discuss the matter with him, that he would need to schedule a private meeting or a phone call. So my husband, who is a Latino and an immigrant, indicated the situation made him question why he was treated in this way and made him feel as though he was approached in a public area because maybe they didn't have the time of day for someone who can be viewed by some people as a minority and is not a U.S. citizen. The main point here is the situation was interpreted in this way, or it was left us questioning whether or not, you know, whether or not that was the intent or not. There was, there was a question. So we do not believe the safety or privacy of our son was seriously considered in this case and do not feel that the situation was viewed or handled in an unbiased manner by the guidance counseling program. We also do not feel that the methods, practices, and materials used for evaluating our son concerning this case were applied in an appropriate, unbiased manner. So this experience and the manner and how it was handled gave us the impression that the, that our son may have been viewed differently, perhaps our family, and that we, it made us question, you know, why this had happened. As a multicultural family, we are very sensitive to how other people interact with us and whether it's verbal or nonverbal communication in nature, and perhaps we are more sensitive than other families, but we believe that we have the right to be treated with dignity and respect and do not want our children to be raised thinking that this is acceptable for people to treat them differently. So we are aware that in the past that the Eau Claire School District offered diversity and cultural awareness training for teachers and staff. We're also informed that this training is no longer currently implemented. We hope that after listening to our experience today that you would seriously reconsider offering this training because this nation is constantly changing and evolving. For example, in 2015, now over 50% of children under five years of age are considered to be within a minority group, and that will continue to change.
Darby.
So teachers and staff not only need to be prepared to deal with students, but the parents and guardians of these students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Our next person on the list is James Karker.
My name is James Karker, and I live at 3385 Whispering Pines Lane in Eau Claire. I am here this evening to register my concern over the significant and disproportionate resource cuts in the vocal music program at Memorial High School. Because I have been given the title of co-president of the MHS Choir Boosters, I represent many, but tonight I address you as a parent, taxpayer, and concerned citizen. Two of my three children have graduated from, and one is currently enrolled at Memorial High School. Between them, they have excelled in the band program, including jazz band, the vocal music program, including show choir, and the dance team that routinely performs at relatively well-funded athletic events. I'm not here to present numbers or to discuss the specifics of state funding methods or salary increments within the district. You already know many of the concerns. Indeed, I urge you to look closely at cuts the program has already endured and the rotation of directors that has resulted. Consider how disproportionate allocation of resources has affected the students and limited the educational opportunities and experiences that are unique to the program. It is important that you restore what has already been cut before you address any across-the-board increases or requests from areas less affected, especially with a referendum on the horizon. You have the power in the purse. I urge you to further address this issue very soon. Over the years, college admission officers did not require the initials A.P. in front of the names of Memorial's choirs and ensembles. They already knew the reputation of excellence and accomplishment within Memorial's vocal music program. Please don't let that change. I respect you and thank you for your contributions to the district. Your consideration of my concerns is appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next person on the list is Bernie Anderson.
My name is Bernie Anderson. I had occasion to be in this building today, and on my way out, I walked by the superintendent's office and decided I wanted to stop in and chat just briefly with the superintendent. It happens that the superintendent was busy out in the district, but her secretary was present and welcomed me, as were two board members. And they said, even though you're not able to visit with the superintendent right now, we do have a board meeting tonight, so you'd be welcome to come back and visit with her at that time. So Superintendent Hardbeck, this is a conversation we'll have in the presence of your school board. Is that okay with you? In January of 2015, my grandson, Graham Anderson, moved to Eau Claire from South Bend, Indiana. His father had been granted custody. We, because my wife is a retired first-grade teacher and I'm a retired school principal from Stillwater, Minnesota, were very interested in accompanying my son on school visits to find the right school for him in this new town. He was a fourth grader. And we, it was our good fortune to happen upon Putnam Heights Elementary. When we walked in, we were greeted by a secretary, a person who you would want representing that school, very, very inviting. A person named Judy Schmidt, who at the time was the volunteer coordinator at that school, offered to take us on a school tour. While on the school tour, the school counselor made it a point to stop by and welcome us to Eau Claire, as did the school principal. We left after about 30 minutes with a real sense of relief when our grandson looked at us and said, "This is where I want to go to school." You might be aware of a theorist named William Perkey, who did a good deal of work in the '70s, '80s, and '90s, and was interested in a concept called intentionally inviting schools. And we found Putnam Heights to be intentionally inviting. We'll fast forward to a year and a half later. His ability was recognized. Of course, I'm his grandfather, so you won't hear a whole lot of objectivity from me, you know. I love him, and, but he was provided programming and curriculum that was challenging. His sixth grade, his fifth-grade teacher this past year, Scott Conferman, you, we just, in the course of a school year, didn't ever hear anything that would even border negative about his teacher. It was all positive. And next year, we'll attend either South or DeLong Middle School. I'm simply here to share with you how grateful our family, my son, my wife, myself, how grateful we are to Eau Claire Schools for providing an inviting, academically challenging school for our grandson to attend. And Dr. Hardbeck, I'm just here to thank you for your hard work.
That leads us on to our board and administrative reports. So our first report is our superintendent's report. Dr. Hardbeck?
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Our next meeting will be July 18th at 8:45 a.m. in the administration building, and that will be a meeting of Policy and Governance Committee, and that will be followed later in the evening at 7:00 p.m. in the administration building with a meeting of the school board. On July 27th, from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. in the administration building, there will be a school board orientation meeting. Also, I just wanted to point out to the board that on August 23rd, WPN is holding a meeting in Wawa Tosa, and more information will be coming to you, but that meeting will be, I think, an all-day meeting?
It's an all-day summit like they did last year, so they're going to have another one, and we'll have more information on that.
Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize three more PBIS schools. At the last board meeting, we were able to recognize Lake Shore. We'd been notified that they were a PBIS School of Distinction for their work in implementing the positive behavioral interventions and support, and Lake Shore was also recognized as being selected as a School of Merit in Mathematics. Tonight, we want to recognize three more schools, and we have some representatives from Meadowview, and if the Meadowview group would stand up, we have Del Bowley, Rennie Richter, Ashley Coles, and Alicia Fromm. And I'm going to ask you to remain standing, and I'm also going to ask Locust Lane, their principal, Laura Schlichting, and their teacher, who's present, is Melissa Pritchard. And I asked both of the principals, you know, why this award or this recognition is so important, and they pointed out it's because it recognizes the work that they're doing to promote the values of their school culture. And for Meadowview, that is respectable, responsible, and safe, and for Locust Lane, it is respect, responsibility, honesty, and safety. So congratulations to Meadowview and to Locust Lane for the distinction that you've brought Now, we had a third school that was similarly recognized, and that's Robbins Elementary, and their representatives could not be here tonight, so what they did was they sent a video that they had made about their PBIS.
Thanks, Patty, for always doing this stuff.
Well, it's great when it works.
You're walking down the street, and you find a wallet with $100 inside, but there is no identification.
Welcome to Courage or Not Courage. I'm Kathy Van Nell. Today, we have 27 wonderful students holding cases with unknown courageous texts.
Do you know the answer? What is really hard to receive if you don't give it first?
Hmm, this is quite a hard question, but I think I know the answer.
Okay, move in.
The answer is evidence of respect.
and I think it's kind of indicative of what's going on in the elementary school. So, thank Principal Teal for sending us that. We just have a reminder for staff that during the summer, there will be district updates following each of the board meetings so that staff can stay abreast of what's happening with all of the initiatives that we have going on with compensation and also with referendum. So, just as a reminder, check your email, please. Thank you.
Can we give one more hand for the people that were recognized tonight? The next on the agenda is the president's report, and I have someone to recognize as well. This is Rich Spindler's last board meeting with us, and as a board in an entire district, we'd like to thank Rich for his time and energy given to the Eau Claire School District Board of Education over the past three-plus years. Two of the years, Rich served as a very able board president for us. Rich's dedication in facilitating consistent deliberative dialogue, along with his incredible facilitation to board action, was very much appreciated. I emulated his, his way of running meetings and, and learned a lot. The Eau Claire community is very fortunate to have had Rich's civic engagement, and I want to wish him, along with all of us here on the board, success in his upcoming transition to his assistant professorship, professorship at SUNY Plattsburgh in upstate New York. He will truly be missed. So, Rich, I want you to keep in touch. I know your phone number, so you never know when you'll get a call from, from one of us. So would you please come and receive this award? Your dedicated service to the Eau Claire School Board, April 20, April 2013 to June 2016.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
And you need the box.
I'll need the box. Yeah, I'm packing right now.
Are you? And here is your certificate.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
I always had to marvel because Rich had this great way of organizing things and having things all put together in order as a mathematician, and I'm way the other way. So we were, we made a great team, so thanks, Rich. So we go on to our other reports. I'm going to take reports as to who has them, so other than policy and governance, do we have any other reports tonight? Demo trends, go ahead, Joe.
So we met last week, and the main agenda item was McKinley and their facility needs, but we also, as a committee, looked over all of the applications. We had a number of applicants from the community to serve on that committee, so we've kind of narrowed it down to some finalists, and I'll be sharing those with Chris, and we'll be having those at a future board meeting for approval.
Thanks, Joe. Any other committee reports? Then I will go over policy and governance. We met today from about 8:45 to 11:00. We covered the following policies. Policy 225, the evaluation of superintendent. The recommendations were made for policy were reviewed. Joe moved, I seconded, to bring the changes of Policy 225 forward on the July 18th board meeting for discussion and possible first reading. That carried by unanimous voice vote. And then, we did, Rich, in question to your idea of about agenda being a committee, we do have policy on agenda preparation, so what we did is we are going to bring Policy 171.2 to the July 18th meeting for discussion and possible first reading because we built in the process that we have with the three board members into that one. Okay? So, yeah, and the agenda preparation piece, that was good you brought that up, had not been updated since '99. Yeah, so that was good. Patty knew right where that one was.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I haven't seen a list of times that we're supposed to attend agenda setting. Do you have one?
Yeah, you, the forward, or the people who are involved in agenda setting, the rotation, that's been sent out. Okay? Okay. We'll make sure.
I'll forward it right now. I'll be sent.
Okay. You're welcome. Thanks, Katherine. Another policy we went over was Policy 133 with board vacancies. We will have a possible reading of that on July 18th meeting as well, along with a possible first reading of the suspension and expulsion and the new human trafficking policy in July. Then we got into our review of the WASB policy quick check that we had done last year. We had several policies that we need to be written, so we prioritized those as well and have them all dated up so that we will possibly get them done by the middle of the fall. So that is the report of policy and governance. So the next thing on our agenda then would take us to the consent resolution agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you last time too, didn't I, Joe?
I'm forgettable.
Yeah. Go ahead, Joe. Legislative report. Sorry.
Good evening. So we have a sheet out here in the audience that it's the Assembly Speakers Task Force on Urban Education. It's their final report and their recommendations. Some of you might remember that they actually came to Eau Claire. And looking at the list, Dr. Hardbeck brought to my attention of the recommendations, the piece on peer review mentor grants, summer school funding, interim assessments and academic interventions, statewide summative assessments, and early childhood education reviewing that. Those are all pieces that had been brought up in Eau Claire when they came for their listening session to tour, I believe it was Lake Shore and North Star.
North Star.
So, this is a, you know, there are some pieces on here that are, I think, positive. Some of the elephants in the room, namely, the school funding formula in and of itself is not on this sheet, you'll see, so we still have work yet to do. And you'll also note that the vice chair of the committee from the Democratic Caucus, she said that they'll be releasing their own separate report of recommendations as well, so if I get ahold of those, I'll share that at a future meeting. I wanted to touch a little bit on the state transportation fund. Some of you may remember there was a referendum, I believe it was the April I was on the ballot or the one before, regarding the state transportation fund and if that was going to be basically in a lockbox. What we're seeing right now, there was a Wisconsin State Journal article published last week. According to this article, the governor and majority party lawmakers are not coming to an agreement on how to shore up the state's transportation fund, which has in the past been mostly funded from motor fuel taxes and motor vehicle registration fees. been mostly funded from motor fuel taxes and motor vehicle registration fees. So, one of the concerns is, and why it really concerns public schools, because the state's transportation fund, now due to that referendum, is in a lockbox, but our dollars are not in a lockbox. So, what we've seen is that the state's transportation fund has actually been gobbling up dollars from the state's general fund, which is the fund that pays out school aids, among many other things. So, the more state general money that is being siphoned away to fund roads and other transportation projects, which is great, and it's good to see the construction where it needs to be done, but it is impacting public school funding in a negative way. So, that's something that is very concerning right now to public schools, and WASB kind of put it out as an alert, especially because the Department of Transportation has submitted for their next year a no-revenue increase budget proposal, so they're not looking to receive revenue from other areas. It looks like they're going to continue to dip from the general fund. So, you know, the, what we're basically seeing, in this case, is our roads getting fixed at the expense of our public schools and the general fund. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then, three other pieces, very short. The Assembly and Senate Education Chairs in Wisconsin, both did very long, very lengthy interviews on Wisconsin Eye, which is Wisconsin C-SPAN. So, I would recommend it if you, if you're interested in kind of seeing where they're looking to go in the next year, to check that out. There's also, for school board members, on nsba.org, to kind of see the legislative considerations across the country. You can kind of see where all the different states are at, and see where we fit in right now with the ESSA and the new reauthorization. So, that's another piece I wanted to just let you know about. That's nsba.org, and it's right on the front page. I think it says "School Legislative Page." And then, finally, Chris and I will be meeting with Kathy Bernier next month. We are doing one-on-ones with our area legislators, and we're still in the process of scheduling WACS, Petrick, Vienhoe, and our federal representatives. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Now, on to the consent resolution agenda. We explained the resolution agenda, that the board has been furnished with background materials on each of the items, and has discussed them at previous meetings. So, I will go through them and move to approve each one, but board members can pull if they want more information, or conversation, or input on one of them. So, I will, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 6, 2016. I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report from May 2016. I would entertain a motion to approve the budget adjustments of May 2016. I would also entertain a motion to approve the gifts in the amount of $24,896.33 for the period of May 1, 2016, through May 31, 2016. I would entertain a motion to approve the payment of all bills in the amount of $5,359,186.6 and a net payroll in the amount of $3,178,381.24 for the period of May 1, 2016, through May 31, 2016. I would entertain a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report, and I would entertain a motion to approve the Head Start Duration Grant.
Please pull that.
So, I would take a motion to approve 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, and 5.7.
So, move?
Second.
We have Rich move, and Charles second. Can you take a roll call vote on that, Patty, please?
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Barstudd?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Catherine?
Maybe I've been out of it, but when does we start all-day Head Start?
When?
Well, it, the proposal addresses all-day Head Start, and I didn't think we had it.
We don't have it, yet.
That's a piece that I think we're still monitoring, because that might come down from a mandate in coming years. Is that correct, Heidi?
Yeah.
So, why do we have a contract for all-day Head Start?
Heidi will explain. Thanks, Heidi.
Hi, everybody. This, Catherine, was something that the Office of Head Start put out, giving all grantees and delegates the opportunity to write for some extended duration funds. So, we're writing this in the hopes that we would be able to offer full-day programming for about 49 of our students. So, it'd be 40% of our enrollment in Head Start.
I assume you've done the planning to accommodate that?
Yes.
When? When will the board know about it?
We probably will hear, we're hoping, by December. And then, if you, in your packet, you'll see that we have a pretty lengthy implementation plan, where we've listed the months and dates, and how we're going to be planning for this. So, we're hoping that that will happen for 49 of our kids.
Thanks, Heidi. Any other questions by board members? Thanks, Heidi. Heidi, maybe one question, quick. The feedback, though, that was given publicly to all-day, to the six-hour day for Head Start, that necessarily has not been, I mean, I mean, we haven't heard on that either. So, we're just being proactive and doing the grant. Yep, that's what I thought.
Yep. And we're hoping, and Lisa, you can help me if I don't remember, but I think that, remember I had talked to you about the new performance standards, and we're thinking that that might be happening this summer. Approval, we just haven't heard for sure, but this is an opportunity above and beyond those performance standards.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good question, Catherine. Thanks. So, would someone like to move the approval of the Head Start Duration Grant?
I move approval.
Second.
Catherine, Commissioner Dux has moved, and Commissioner Vu, second, to approve. Let's take a roll call vote on this as well.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Barstudd?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
So, now we move off to the individual considered resolutions. And the first thing on our individually considered resolutions is our school board member application interviews and appointments. And we've had two people put their names forward for taking Rich's spot on the school board, and let me talk a little bit about the process tonight. We do have a policy that tells us that the people that have applied will have three-minute oral statement to the board, and I've decided, in order to pick who goes first, I wrote down a number on my agenda, so you have to pick a number between 1 and 10, so that we do this, and the closest one to the number that I wrote down, because Charles can see it here. Do you see it there, Charles?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go first. So, and after that, we've opened it up a little bit for board to ask a few questions, if that's okay, and then, we will select the candidate as follows. Board members will be given a prepared ballot with the applicant's names. Board members will vote and sign their names to the ballots. Ballots will be collected, and the votes with board members' names read aloud and tallied by the clerk or a clerk designee. The successful applicant must receive a majority vote of all members, so you need to receive four votes. A first ballot will be taken, and if no one receives a majority, and there's some other things, if we have more than two applicants, so our two applicants are Dr. Anton Smetsz and Erin Harder. So, Dr. Smetsz, can you pick a number between 1 and 10? Okay, Erin? My number was 10, so Erin, you will go first.
Madam President?
Yes, you may.
I believe it also says that if one person is asked a question, the other person should also be asked the same question.
Yes, exactly.
Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you for making that clear. Yes, and Erin? Patty will put up the little clock up there. It helps us kind of keep you orientated as to the amount of time.
Very good.
And it, thank you.
Okay. I'm Erin Harder. I'm a native of Eau Claire. Attended K through 12 here, and then on to UWBC, where I graduated with a degree in computer science. Got a great start to my life and career here in the Eau Claire School District, and I want to make sure today's Eau Claire kids have the same or better opportunities. As a parent of four boys attending Eau Claire school here, and as an owner of a local business, and as a citizen who wants to see Eau Claire reach its highest potential, my main interest in running for this position is that our teachers get the recognition and sense of professional worth that I think is much lower than it ought to be right now in Eau Claire. From my view, that problem comes down to two really important questions, compensation and professional autonomy. When our hard-working teachers are recognized and valued, they become even more engaged and invigorated, and when that happens, it is our kids who are the beneficiaries. The reputation and profile of our Eau Claire schools rise, talent is drawn to our community, we all prosper. It's a virtuous cycle. That cycle's hit a kind of a bump in the road, due to a longstanding, as yet unrectified quirk in our state's school funding system. Part of addressing that issue is addressing the pay gap between what our district offers and what teachers can find in neighboring districts. Right now, although we have many very talented teachers here in Eau Claire, little by little, year by year, we're losing out in the competition for teacher talent to those neighboring districts. It's our kids and our community that are the real losers as this trend continues. So, making the case to our voters to vote yes in the November referendum as at least a stopgap is a major motivator for me in applying to this position. I also think better recognizing our teachers as the skilled professionals they are will help keep them the best ones in our district. If appointed, that would be a focus of mine as well. I think of teacher-led initiatives, innovation zones, public charter schools are good ways to do that. So, despite our funding troubles and other challenges, I think we are, starting from a very strong foundation here in Eau Claire, lots of opportunities, and I'm excited about our district's evolution, and I appreciate the board's consideration of my application to join in the good work they've already begun.
Thank you, Erin. We'll wait and ask questions at the end, so you both get the questions. Anton Smetsz, Dr. Smetsz?
Thank you for this opportunity. I am acutely aware that I did not seek this position in the most recent election, and I would understand and respect that this may be a decisive factor in your preference. While I did seek this board position in the election 12 years ago, and have considered it since, I had a choice this year to put forward the effort, the expense, and hard work to run again. So, why am I here? I have attended recent board meetings to explore my own motives. I will say that my diverse experiences on local boards and committees, and lifelong residents in our community, form the foundation for the legitimacy of my candidacy. In this brief presentation, I would like to emphasize my three particular strengths that should stand out. Number one, as to what kind of a board member I would be, I recognize myself a lot in how Mr. Spindler operates. I mean that in the sense of style. Should you honor me in choosing me, I will aspire to be as effective as he has been. I am outspoken, and I'm a prepared question-asker. The boards I served on recognized me as a strong Myers-Briggs Type J. That means I'm effective to help bring complex questions and issues to a decision-ready disclosure with an eye for what consensus lies underneath our individual stances and beliefs. It's about us, not me. I am a well-known and respected professional and businessman in our community for 40 years. As a pediatric psychologist and certified school psychologist, and former CEO of a large clinic, my life work has been to serve children and families, just like you do as commissioners. Part of my career involved a lot of public speaking. We need a board member who not only understands the finances as they relate to this upcoming referendum, but can effectively advocate it, for it in public. I have the conviction that I can help the board with a successful referendum outcome. Last, I offer you my connections and experience with, last but certainly not least, my time. I now have lots of it, as I no longer have career obligations. I am free of conflicts of interest. I am not a real early-morning person, but count me in from 9 o'clock on, wherever I can be of use. I am well-aware, well-aware, how much work a board position can and must be, and will be able to give it my all. Thank you for considering me.
Thank you very much. So, I open the board now to questions of our two candidates. Joe?
My first question for both of you is, if appointed, what committees are you most interested in serving on?
Wherever I'm most needed. I obviously have interest in mental health issues as they relate to children. That's my specialty, but I'm also a person who likes to develop new policies, but where the need is the biggest, I'll be happy to join.
I would echo that. Coming in kind of midterm, as we would be, or either of us would be, I think, you know, I would look to fit in wherever it's most needed, but I do, as I mentioned in the statement, have a particular interest in the Charter School, Charter Choice Committee, and that work that's going on there.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Charles? Commissioner Vu? I have to remember.
I know you said something in the write-up already, but could you elaborate what other business you have in addition to what's in the paper? I know you're both businessmen. If any.
Yep, yes. It's a computer software business we've been running for the last 20 years or so that I mentioned in the paper, here in Eau Claire. And I also, my wife and I co-founded a Montessori preschool a couple of years ago, here in Eau Claire, for ages 3 to 6, and we try to serve as a feeder for the charter school, the charter Montessori school here, which, Montessori, if you know much about it, really should start at age 3, and of course, that's kind of impossible for the public school to serve that group, so we were trying to fill that gap. Also, in my business, I've done, been fortunate to be involved in quite a few education-related initiatives. I was, if you've heard of brainpop.com, which is a kids' educational site that's pretty widely used, including here in the district. Learninglab.org, which is also coincidentally used here in the district. I was very surprised to get a call from those folks here in the technology department with a big order, which was nice. I don't think they knew we were from Eau Claire, but yeah, so, a number of different things of that nature. I don't know if that answers your question, though.
I have really owned three businesses. For 27 years, I owned Omni Clinic, a mental health organization here in Eau Claire, now Vintage Point Clinic. That was until 2013. I also owned a business that did prior authorizations for insurance companies, meaning that in the mental health field, both outpatient and inpatient payments go through rather elaborate prior authorization procedures, and my company ran that for Group Health Cooperative of Eau Claire for about six years. Our most recent endeavor is in a whole different field, but it's about kids. My wife and my son and I owned an Eau Claire music school. My wife and my son and I owned an Eau Claire music school where we entertained 200, 260, I have to look at Ray, fiddlers, ukulele, banjo players, piano players, et cetera. And that was also a business that we recently passed on to another owner. So it's been a little bit of everything, lots with finances, lots with mental health, of course, and a little bit of music.
Commissioner Dux?
You both have a lot of strengths in what we do here. Do you feel that, you know, if you have a conflict of interest, it's up to you to really manage that yourselves? Do you feel you have any conflict of interest?
Yeah, I think there's a potential conflict of interest with being the co-owner of a Montessori preschool that considers itself a feeder to the Charter Montessori and also having kids in that school and a wife who was president of that board. I think that's a, you know, could be seen as a conflict of interest potentially just because of my longstanding interest in the Charter School, but I believe I would be quite objective about that school and its strengths and weaknesses. I certainly have been to date and would continue that as a member of the board. Not sure if there are others, none come to mind, but I would be very glad to address them as they come up.
I have a special place in my heart for the Montessori School. I was part of, when the school was developed in its earlier stages, I've been its president for a year and a half. I would, I would need to be careful to not let my heart speak too much if there were issues in that respect. The other part, since January of this year, I've been a very active advisor to the, one of the innovation projects, the My School Project. I'm not an owner of it. I'm a volunteer advisor to the young people who wish to do this. Should this come to be as a McKinley Innovative Project, that might potentially be something that I need to be aware of, but we're not there yet, but that's something I can think about, but.
I have a question. If, if you are not the one chosen tonight, do you have any advice for us as a board? And also may want to comment, if you aren't chosen tonight to serve on the board, and I know you alluded this, both kind of alluded to this in your, the letter that you sent to us to answer our questions, how would you stay and remain engaged with us and possibly run again in the spring? So we're looking for advice here.
Well, the, the commitment, I know you've all shown, has always been inspirational to me. I know the amount of time it takes and effort and energy just from campaigning, not to mention actually engaging with the real work of the board. So, please keep that up would be my advice. In terms of, you know, I would, I would reiterate what I had said in my opening statement, my concerns about the, just sort of what we can, whatever we can do, both in terms of compensation and in terms of teacher autonomy, or if there are other measures that we can find that will help retain those teachers because they're the key, as far as I'm concerned. That would be my advice. Oh, I guess just to your second point, I am involved in the Support Eau Claire Schools Initiative, which is currently looking to support the referendum. I'm helping with their website because I got some experience with that, so, but, and among other things. And I would definitely continue to be involved in that, and I think if, if I didn't end up getting appointed tonight, I'd probably make another run for it at some point in the future.
Whoa. I think trying to advise you sounds a little bit pretentious, especially with respect to the referendum where you have so many times that you already spent. I've been actually working a lot in reading about failed referendums. I thought that was an interesting angle to see what happens in community where referendums fail and try to learn something about this. And what I would take out of that is something that you may already know, so you have to forgive me if I preach to a wonderful choir, but it is a little bit about having a good understanding of two aspects in a referendum. The first one being that while you might want to speak about what you as commissioners think is really important, you have to have a good idea what a voter would think if a referendum question wouldn't pass. It's kind of like when you want to buy a house and you want to spend $500,000 and the price is 525, and then the question is, are you willing to let that $25,000 go? And that you really should tap into what this community might not want to tolerate if a referendum would not pass. What's the price to pay of saying no? I thought that was really interesting. The other part too was the great difference between doing a referendum at a national vote where you get really a very different type of voters than you might get in a non-national vote. And so I'd be curious about what was already recognized and would like to kind of think along with that. If I understood your question well about next year, obviously, if you give me the honor to be here, I will dust up my signs. They are in my basement and I will run next year. If you choose Mr. Harder, that is fine. I would, I would have to think about what I would do then. My passion is increasingly with a subgroup of mental health issues. I call it primary and secondary social anxiety disorders, a much misunderstood but very essential part of school dropout. That is an area where I'm now advising this innovative system with. I'll be happy to keep doing that if, if my input is deemed useful, whether you will elect me tonight or not. Thank you.
Thank you so much, both of you. Anybody else? Then I think we can pass out the ballots.
Okay, sorry, I've not done this before. First ballot is Anton Smets and then Erin. Oh, okay. I didn't know that. That's all right, I'll pick it up along the way. Okay. Charles voted for Anton Smets. Rich Spindler voted for Erin Harder. Okay, it's yours. Okay. Catherine Dux voted for Anton Smets. Joe Lugenville voted for Erin Harder. Chris Hambach Boyle voted for Erin Harder. And Carolyn Barstow voted for Erin Harder. So it is four to two.
So, as far as our policy is concerned, we have the four votes for Erin Harder. You are going to replace Rich Spindler on the school board. Before we finish though, I wanted to thank Anton, Dr. Smets, for, greatly for putting yourself out there to serve your community and to serve on the school board. I hope that in the next week or so I can give you a call and that we can talk a little bit about how we can keep you engaged here in the school district and relative to your strengths that you talked about tonight, because certainly you are an amazing candidate as well. So thank you very much. Thank you, Erin, too. So you can tell I'm getting used at running a board meeting, but I'm not really fluid at it yet. So, I used to have my computer in front of me and I could keep track, and now all I can do is to look at the agenda and get us to the next step. So, the next thing on our individually-considered resolutions is the revisions to Policy 185, Board Committees. Can we pull that up, Patty? So, what we did with the Board Committees is we did not put in, right? What we want to talk about is we did not put in the piece about the Agenda Setting Committee because we covered it under, okay? But we did add a piece in here that says the committee chair and the administrative liaison will set the agenda with input from the board members and the superintendent relative to our standing committees, because there, it was, it wasn't necessarily clear as to how we did that now that we're doing Robert's Rules of Order and we've got chairs of those committees. So, I think that's all we need to state about it and we can go for a second reading? All right, we can vote, okay. Any questions? Commissioner Dux?
I have a question. Is it new that anyone can come to any board, committee meeting?
I can answer that if you want. That was in the WASB sample language when we looked at their committee policies. They outlined-
That is new.
Yeah, they outlined the legalities of when people can attend, and technically, any board member can attend committees, which answers kind of the, we thought adding that would answer maybe the fact, you know, we'd have, we've had board members in the past who have not, on a committee, appointed, but they still want to attend and learn about what's going on.
Well, I've asked to attend any number of meetings, but I'm, I've always been told that we would have a quorum of the board and that that would not work. So what is the answer to that?
We added that to the, we actually, I mean, we really beefed up this policy to add all of that. So, we added the piece that every board committee is noticed under, you know, under state law. So we have the piece about if enough board members are there at a committee meeting, it may constitute a meeting of the board, just for the purposes of the Open Meetings Law, but the board will not take any action as a governing body.
We also specified that the, right, cannot vote, yep. Commissioner Spindler?
Yeah, I had to, I noticed the same thing, which was good. And I would just comment on that, you know, the committee can technically only follow what's on the agenda, and if there's no vote on the agenda, which there usually is not, then we wouldn't have to worry as a board that they're doing something as a board without other board members. So because of, you have to follow the agenda anyhow, so that helps.
Well, I respectfully say that it certainly will affect the work of the different committees because you'll have more opinions out there, so we can see how it works.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I would hope that as general practice, other board members would not regularly come, I mean, because that's why we have appointed board members. So I'm hoping that does not become a practice. I won't be here, but I'm hoping that our standard practice continues that the three board members appointed are the ones that go, only maybe if there's something particularly special and other board members go. I would hope that's what would happen as a practice.
I just want to comment on the fact that we have a lot of committees, so I don't foresee all of us going to all these meetings because I always can tell the story now about Carolyn, and she got on the board and realized how many committees. I mean, it's, it's, so I, I don't think that's going to happen, but if it does, we have it open. I mean, it's been noticed, so we should be fine. Commissioner Barstow?
I also want to point out that it's the committee that does any voting on the committee, the committee members and anyone else who is there, who is not part of that committee, does not vote, as I understand it. Is that correct? Which would, which would make some difference to, okay.
I may cut down on the length of the board meetings since you've gotten a chance to say what you want to say at the board, at the committee meeting.
That's correct, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Vu?
Could you elaborate the part on Agenda Setting again?
Commissioner Lugenville?
So we had a question from Commissioner Spindler at the last board meeting about the fact that we have an agenda-setting process, but his, his concern was that there maybe wasn't anything in policy. So in this morning's committee meeting, we took a look at policies and Patty had found 171.2, which actually pertains to the creating of the agenda for the board meetings and what that process is. So what we're going to do moving forward is we added that piece about how the agendas are set up for committees, and then we have the Policy 171.2 pertaining to the regular board meetings, and we're going to be bringing changes to that policy in July. And at the bottom of this policy, we also cross-reference it, so we have the unity there.
Commissioner Vu?
So, I have a question, how this fits in? You know how every time after the board meeting, at the conclusion of the board meeting, we asked if there's any further agenda item? Can this agenda setting be the channel for that? So that any time when an idea come about, it has to be discussed and agreed by more than two board members so that we can zero in on prioritizing our energy for the thing that are most pressing and important for the district and not just to answer any agenda item that is presented at the board meeting, because we need to hash out during the agenda meeting before we come to the big board meeting?
Commissioner Spindler?
Sorry. You're saying to do that in Agenda Setting?
Yes, can you do that?
Is that right? So, well, I think P&amp;G could look at that idea for 171.2, right? Because they'll talk about what Agenda Setting is for, its purpose, and what it should do, right? I assume that's the plan for 171.2. But my comment to that is, I would say historically, the board, you've probably, there's probably been change back and forth on that. I think probably sometimes you've had a pushback where board members say, hey, I have something that I really want to talk about, how come you're not putting it on? And, you know, they'll feel like the minority voice, even as one, is not being heard. The other argument I think has come where, boy, you know, we're not looking at our bigger picture here, we're doing this little thing, which is what you're saying. And I think those are two conflicting opinions about how much power an individual board member should have, and I don't know if you want to put that in policy, but that, I think that's an important discussion to have when you get to that 171.2.
Commissioner Lugenville?
And I would say too, we, we started that discussion this morning, and we actually included a sentence that we added about the request for future agenda items and the role that that plays in the Agenda Setting process. So I, hopefully we can have a good discussion next month about that.
Did you get your question answered? Yeah, because we did, we almost talked about exactly what you said today at Policy and Governance. So thanks, Charles. Commissioner Dux?
And you also said that WASB has a policy on Agenda Setting, is that correct? So I'm sure you'll look at that and get some ideas.
That's what we, that's what we used today, or we adapted or looked at today for input.
I'm watching you because I just got off of the Policy and Governance Committee.
I know, it's kind of strange you're not there. You were seven years on that committee. Thanks, Catherine. Commissioner Spindler?
Yeah, without being the bush too much, it's a really different topic on Agenda Setting, but I have heard some, some boards actually do Agenda Setting at the end of their meeting, of their board meeting. Now that would extend ours, but there are some that do that. So there are alternative models out there that you can think about, so. I'm not advocating for that one, but there are others. for that one, but there are others.
Anyone else? Then we can go on to-
Do you need a motion for this one?
Yes.
I move approval, then, of Policy 185.
Second?
Second.
Policy is moved by Commissioner Luganbill and seconded by Commissioner Barsted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Policy is unanimously passed by voice vote, thank you. Then we need to go on to the approval of the Salary Schedule Transition, and we did receive information as a Board, and Abby, would you like to pull that up so that we can have it here as well?
Do you want the the draft that we put into the executive summary?
Yes.
Okay, yep, hold on just a minute. You'll have to bear with us for just a minute. Patty's going to pull it up.
Well, if it's okay with the President, I'll make a comment.
Commissioner Spindler?
I just want to thank you for the nice layout of what you did, putting forth the options. It's very clear, well done, so thank you.
You're welcome. It was a team effort.
Was it?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle, do you want me to read through the steps?
Yeah, I think so, just to put the Board all on the same page.
Okay.
It was very well done, thank you, too. I'd like to comment on that. It was very easy to go through and to figure out, so thank you.
Great. Okay, well, we tried to separate this down into kind of the last questions that we posed at the last Board Meeting of information we needed for the next steps. So, what those included, you can see at the top of the screen, was the Transition Process Formula Date. We have presented this but didn't have formal approval. We talked about the separation option, longevity, the certified last call for credits, the extended administrator contract flexibility, and the National Board slash doctoral degree compensation. So, that's the same order that we have these laid out within this PowerPoint. So, the first thing that we need your approval on is how do you want us to move through the transition process? So, basically, the formula, and what we've been talking about all along is that it would include their salary, any pre-approved summertime cards that they worked last summer, and then if they had earned any longevity that has currently been paid. For Option A, that would be the 1.7 million transition. The difference in Option B would be the same things, but then in addition at one additional level for all staff, and that was an additional 1.3 million. So, under this one, we're looking for, does the Board want us to do Option A or Option B?
But we then had the conversations about the separation options, so-
That's under number two. So, do you want me to go through all the options first? We anticipated you going through one by one.
Yeah, can we just put them all in our head?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, separation options, as you can see on the screen, Option A was to give an additional level to employees hired prior to July 1, 2012, and Option B was one level to employees hired prior to July 1, 2008. Option C was both, and Option D was no separation options. If we move on to longevity options, thank you, again, Option A was earned longevity that has not been paid for non-certified employees, which was 190,000. Option B was earned longevity that has not been paid for certified employees at a cost of 98,000. Option C would to grant both of those longevity options, and Option D would be not to do anything different with longevity that has not been paid. Part four would be to approve allowing credits completed by June 30, 2016 to be included in the transition formula. Part five-
Can I ask a question on that one?
Yes.
Do we have a cost to that one?
We do not have a cost, because we have no idea who's currently taking classes.
What it is, yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm. Part five is extended administrator contract flexibility. Listed below are the positions within the non-affiliated administrative group that we have recommended changes that are more accurately reflective of the work that they're doing. And so, at the last Board Meeting, actually, maybe the last two Board Meetings, we had said we would like the Board to grant those employees affected the option of implementation on July 1, 2016, or July 1, 2017, whichever worked better for them. So, part five is really just granting that date, and then just a reminder that elementary principals, the recommendation is 207 to 260, middle school assistant principal, 199 to 209, high school assistant principal from 199 to 209, high school assistant principal from 199 to 237, and if you remember, that position would also be in charge of summer school program at the high schools, the high school assistant principal, athletic director from 199 to 260, and the McKinley principal from 199 to 260 as well. And then the final part we are looking for guidance on is the National Board slash doctorate degree stipend. So, what we landed on was that for nationally board certified teachers, they'd receive $1,500 upon initial certification and $1,000 for each remaining nine years of certification. That would based upon the certified teachers we have that have that certification today, that would be $36,000. Doctoral degree, they'd receive 1,500 upon completion and 1,000 for each year after that. Currently, we have six employees, so that's 6,000. If you did Option C, which would award both the nationally board certified and doctoral degrees, that would cost currently 42,000, and if you were with Option D, there would be no additional cost, because that's no stipend option.
Thank you, Abby.
You're welcome.
And then, if you want to pull up the cost of the options?
Sure, do you want the spreadsheet?
Sure.
Okay.
I just think it'll make for a rich discussion.
Would you like me to walk through it?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so at the last Board Meeting, I was asked to present a spreadsheet that would talk about the different options and try to put the costs all in one place so you could see them side by side. So, Option One is granting, you know, the transition to the new salary schedule, one level for all, which is the 3 million that we talked about before, and then that includes the one level for employees hired prior to 2012, one level for employees hired prior to July 1, 2008, longevity earned but not granted, nationally board certification, and doctorate degrees. So, the 1617 projected costs for all of those items was 4.9 million dollars. And then down below on the bottom is we wanted to make sure that you understand the fund balance implications, and so the 1516 projected deficit, because we don't have 1617 projected yet, we're working on that now, was 3.9 million. And then what I did is I said, okay, if we do an additional Option One, that would have a net impact to our fund balance on Option One of 8.8 million. If you look at Option Two, that is the transition to the new salary schedule of 1.7, and then the additional steps for both groups of employees, one hired prior to July 1, 2012, the second one hired July 1, 2008, and then the longevity and the national board certified. So, that was a cost of 3.6 million. Option Three was just one level for all employees hired prior to 2012, about 3 million. Option Four, if we just transition, plus the longevity earned but not granted and the the national boards and doctorate, a little over 2 million, and just simply transition is 1.7.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, I'd like to open it for discussion for the Board. Commissioner Dux?
I think it's it's very well laid out, Abby, but I think we need to think about how we would vote in terms of whether we attach a caveat that the that whether something is dependent on passing a referendum. Personally, I don't like to pass everything, even though it's well deserved, because if we can do this, if we can pass all of this, I think the question will arise, why do you need a referendum? And I feel very strongly about that. So, I would prefer to vote on part of it that I think is essential, like the transition proposal, and then maybe something else to go with it. But I think we have to be careful not to act like we think it's going to all happen. It's not sustainable, in my opinion.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Dux. Just to organize it how I I'm imagining that this will happen is tonight, we'll vote on these pieces that we think should happen, no matter what, regardless of the referendum. And I assume in the future, when the Board meets to talk about referendum, there might be other pieces that you did not approve tonight that you could decide to make referendum dependent like you were referring to. So, I have to see that as a two-stage process. So, tonight, you only want to vote for things that you think, I don't need community input on, I think we should do this regardless of referendum. So, I think that's how you each Board Member should decide their vote tonight, and then if you think some things are important, but you think, wow, we really need community input on that, put that in a referendum. So, that's how I'm approaching it. And just a question for the President, so for these different parts, do you want are we going to vote separately on each of these as we go through those?
I think so, yep.
So, we're not going to, like, say, move Option Five or Option Two, we're going to do each of these in the parts by the part separately?
I think with the discussion on each one would be good.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, let's go. Anybody else have input?
Well, I just wanted to say that we had a pretty thorough conversation about this in Budget and Development, and I think we were pretty much in agreement. Do you feel that way, Commissioner Spindler, that that we would do some that were referendum dependent and others not?
Yeah, I'm not clear on each Board Member at the budget, but I think, yeah, I would agree in general, yeah.
Okay, so can we go back, then, to the Part One of the Transition Process and step us through there? Okay? So, does anyone want to move an option? Commissioner Luganbill?
I move adoption of Option B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Commissioner Luganbill and seconded by Commissioner Dux for Option B. Yes, you may.
We have a deficit of 3. what, right now?
3.9 is what's projected for 1516.
So, that if we vote on Option B, we'll have a deficit of 6.9. Is that correct?
That would be correct, based upon what we know now.
And when you say earned longevity that has been paid, meaning it's already been paid?
Right, so that means they're currently receiving that amount of longevity within their current pay? Does that help?
So, can we Commissioner Spindler?
Okay, so, just a discussion here, the difference between the two is the one level to all employees, right? That to me, that's hard to justify for recent employees who seem to be close to the market rate who were hired recently about giving them a level. That's difficult for me to agree with, and considering the budget situation. So, that that's my worry or concern or rationale from my from my side, so. I think, moving on to separation options, I think some longstanding employees have suffered for a while, but more recent employees, I'm just not convinced that it's necessary for retention to provide them a level. And I know we've talked about this a couple of times, and I can see both arguments, so.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Oh.
Commissioner Vu?
Clarification again. So, we will vote on each of the part, or if we vote on Part One, then avoid Part Two?
I think we'll go through each of them. For example, Rich just discussed the idea about maybe amending Option B.
Well, no, if if Option B failed, I would move to do Option A. That's what I would do. If it passes, then I would we just move on to the next part, I assume, right? Correct?
So, any other input? I guess I'd like to speak along the lines of what Rich said as well. I think it's important to have some of the option pieces within the separation options, and also, too, how many employees did get in touch with us relative to being the new hires being hired at a at a higher rate than the people that are already there. And so, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Spindler in the sense that maybe we could be more critical in how we fashion this to make sure that the needs are met for those that have been with us and that we depend on for coaching and mentoring our newer employees. So, I'd like to make that comment. Commissioner Spindler?
Yeah, I have a question for Administration. I don't know, it might be for you, Kay. For hiring recently, the past few years, I assume you've been trying to hire in what you would pay at the market rate as best you can, right? I mean, those that have been hired would not have come here, I would assume, if they had been offered something better elsewhere. I mean, there's other considerations, obviously. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I think I understand the question. I can share that in the past in the past, most recent years, I've needed to look to grant up to the third step, which is as high as what, you know, our past practice had been, which we could grant, more so in the past couple of years than in the early years when I first got here. And I think that that just has to do with the, you know, the free agency, open market that there is. But again, that goes to what President Hamburg Boyle was saying about the communications you've heard from employees about how they've been leapfrogged leapfrogged over by these new hires, and so there are more people coming in in the past couple of years at a Step Three versus a Step One, simply because that's the way that we're able to get people here, because our rate was lower and they weren't and the rate wasn't changing. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Commissioner Vu?
May I ask for clarification again? So, we are voting tonight based on the year-long compensation study recommendations, and we are voting tonight, we are voting hopefully for long term. I don't know how long that is, but not just to vote this year this way and then fix it again next year immediately. We are voting because we voted based on the compensation study, and hopefully it's for long term, and not to come back to the same problem within a year or two.
We're we're voting tonight for the transition over to the new compensation structure and what that will look like. I mean, we're going to fashion what that transition is going to look like. So, we can answer some questions and and get some things fixed for some of the concerns that people have had upon hiring, and also our own employees that have had some questions about where they sit relative to where they haven't, you know, moved on the on the scale. So, my question is, we have a motion on the floor for Option B. We can call the question and vote on it. Commissioner Dux?
I seconded the motion, but I usually do that just to get it so we can talk, but I prefer Option A. And the reason is that I don't think every employee needs a promotion when they first start, just as as others have said.
Commissioner Spindler?
May I follow up on what Commissioner Vu said?
Yes.
So, what Commissioner Hamburg Boyle said was right, you know, this is to figure out where people land on the salary schedule, basically, and the intent is exactly what you said. Once people are on that, our commitment has been that we will use that schedule, people will move along that level. People will move along that level each year, you know, per how we wrote that policy document and how the schedule looks. So this is just to, basically, let's get them on there where we think is best for employees right now and that we can afford, then continue to move that, move people on there unlike the past where they weren't moved. So I don't know if that answers your question, but, okay. And to follow up on the proposal for Option B, in my mind, and I know different people think differently about this, that one level to employees, I could see if we felt strongly about it, a referendum, that I would feel like I would need community input on that. So that's a possibility. I just don't feel like it's required now for it. So that's kinda where I'm at with that one.
Should we call, can we call the question?
Can I?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I would very much like to make some decision, but due to conflict of interest, so my voting tonight is going to be different. Just so that we're on the same page.
Thank you. So it's my understanding, I'm leading this meeting, is that we could call the question and vote on Option B? Correct? Okay. Can we, can we call the question, take a vote? Patty? Patty, do you wanna roll call, please?
You bet. Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
No.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
No.
Commissioner Vu?
Epstein.
Commissioner Barsted?
Option B. Yes.
You will vote yes?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dux?
No.
So 3 to 2.
Okay. Commissioner Spindler?
I'll make a motion for Option A.
Option A is on the floor, any discussion?
Need a second.
We need a second?
Second.
Thanks, Catherine. Commissioner Spindler moved, and Commissioner Dux second to put Option A on the floor. Any discussion? Take, okay, call the question? Patty?
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Epstein.
Commissioner Barsted? Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Okay, so we've passed Option A. So then we can go on to the separation options. We have three options there. One, level to employees hired prior to July 2nd, 2012. And Option B, you can read it yourself. Options C and D, would any, would anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner Spindler?
I'll make a motion to approve the option, Option A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion out on the floor to move Option A, one level to employees hired prior to July 1st, 2012. Any discussion? Commissioner Spindler?
This, just to clarify, this is the complement of my last argument. Complement, or the inverse of my last argument. These are the employees that I feel that we have an issue about retaining. So that's why I'm making that motion.
So we have a motion on the floor, and a second for Option A. Any other comments? I know everybody's thinking pretty deeply up here.
Come on, you're not even gonna argue with me.
No, because I agree with you.
You know, I wanna make a comment on the difference. I mean, Abby, can you explain the differences between Option A and Option B, please?
Yes, I will. So, at Budget Development, when we were brainstorming separation options, we kind of had like a tiered level. So we said, anybody hired after Act 10, everybody's been frozen at the same point in time. And the district implemented Act 10 in the fiscal 1213. So that's where the July, prior to July 1st, 2012 came in. Because post Act 10, everybody's been the same, everybody's been frozen. Prior to that, it was a little bit different. So then we went in four-year benchmarks. And so, we looked at the numbers, looking at, you know, July 1st, 2008 to July 1st, 2012. We looked at July 1st, 2004 to 2008, and then 2000 to 2004. Once you get back into some of those older years, things were negotiated, things were very different. And so, Budget Development recommended we bring forth just two measurement options for separation dates. And so that's where we came up with the hired prior to July 1st, 2012, and hired prior to July 1st, 2008.
Thank you, did everybody get that? Okay, thanks, Abby. So can we, are we ready for a vote? Okay, let's go.
Okay, this is separation Option A with a cost of $950,000. Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Epstein.
Commissioner Barsted?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Okay. So then, we can go on to the longevity options. Move to approve granting the options that you see up on the screen. Does anybody have any questions of Abby before they make a motion? I was engrossed in reading.
It's okay.
Chris, they say.
I'm just meditating.
Commissioner Spindler?
It's okay. We've discussed this in budget, I'm just wondering, maybe just for you, I'd like you to clarify that some have gotten longevity, some haven't, maybe just clarify that.
Sure, I can do that. So, when we kind of talked about transitioning to the new salary schedule, we got a lot of questions from the compensation committees, well, what about if my longevity's been frozen? And so that's really where Option A and Option B come through. With the certified group, they have been able to honor longevity all along each year. Where in, like, the hourly group, they've been frozen for many years because the pot for the base wage increase was too small to be able to give longevity to everybody, plus give them a wage increase as well. So the board approved just doing the wage increase, so everybody across the board got that, instead of just a select few amount of people. And so, it makes a difference for some people as they're transitioning from the old to new, if we include that as part of the calculation, that they were eligible for it, but just didn't receive it because it was frozen at the time. And so Option A is really talking about the hourly or the non-affiliated people that would have qualified for longevity, but because the base wage calculation didn't allow for them to receive it, this would allow us to grant that in addition, when we're doing the transition from old to new, we would include that dollar amount. Option B, then because we talked about it for the hourly and non-affiliated groups, then, you know, we have a handful of certified staff that would qualify in the 1516 year that wouldn't receive it because we were moving away from longevity going forward. And so that's where Option B came in, we've identified who those people are. And so Option C is just those two added together if the board decides to grant that.
Commissioner Spindler?
I'll have to admit, I'm torn on this one. This is one where I, I think it's the right thing to do for those who haven't received it. It's always, you know, adding more to our, to our budgetary issues. So I do feel torn, which is why I'm sitting here, I haven't, not made a motion yet. But ethically, I feel like it's something we should do. I just have not decided if it's something we have to pay, we should pay for. So, I don't know, others thoughts on this, so?
I, Commissioner Dux, go ahead.
Can you add those figures up that we've passed already and tell me what our bill is?
Sure. Our current bill stands at $2,650,000. Just say 2.6 million.
And Abby, what would that add to with the deficit?
Approximately about 4.5. No? Okay, so 3, oh, you're right, 5.5. Well, no, 2. Okay, let's try 6.5, I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
There will be quizzes at the end.
Great.
Commissioner Barsted?
I, I just, I just want to reiterate what Rich said, that I, I think we really ought to be voting for Option C. And that's really the only fair way to do this for all of the employees. So, I'm going to move that we grant Option C.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, put it on the table.
Discussion, further? Commissioner Dux?
I want to do this very metro, we're at 6.5 right now.
Abby? What is the working capital sitting at right now?
The working capital right now is just over 26 million, which is about 25.2% of the expenditures for 1516. Our auditors recommend that we look at, you know, a range of 25 to 33%.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Spindler?
Question, is this something that's feasible for a referendum piece? As part of compensation? Does it make sense, even?
I would have to say, I'm not sure how we would do that because longevity goes away with the new salary schedule.
Right, right.
These dollars, when we looked at the number of employees that would push them to the next level by granting that, it wasn't that many. I mean, if you remember in Budget Development, we talked about transition costs with and without. And there was very little difference in transition costs with or without. So, off the top of my head, I can't remember how many people, but it was not as many as I expected it to be.
So this dollar amount is just for those that really would have?
No, that, this dollar amount is the amount of longevity that they would have earned in 1516 or prior for the non-certified employees. That's the cost using 1516 dollars. And then that would be, you know, they're not being paid it because it was just earned this year, or it's been frozen. And so that's the cost, that's the value of the actual longevity. For hourly employees, it was 3.6 or 9% of their salary. And for certified staff, it was a flat 14.64, 29.28.
So my question is, let's say half of these employees aren't moved up a level. I put a gen, you know, by giving them this longevity.
Sure.
Moved to the same spot.
Correct.
So is it really cost this much, is my question? I mean, if they're going to the same spot on the?
I see what you're saying.
Right?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. It still would cost the same, it just makes that transition cost smaller because it's included moving from point A to point B.
So, it just seems to me that if someone's moving to the same spot, that's already included in that transition to the new schedule, the 1.7 million.
I'm not explaining this very well, yeah. I mean, essentially, the transition cost, if we include this 288, off the top of my head, I don't remember what it was, both of them averaged out to be 1.7 million. One was a little less than 1.7, one was a little more than 1.7 million. So the difference between allowing this and not allowing it, because it's not, basically what's happening is, it's putting them closer to the next level, but it's not enough to push them to the next level. And so, you could, I mean, right now, it's not in the trend, that 1.7 million at all because I've just done it without not knowing where the board was gonna go. So if we put that into the formula, most people are still gonna land at the same place whether they, whether we include it or not. The transition cost will be a little more than 1.7, or a little less than 1.7. It's very confusing, and I'm sorry about that.
So can I ask a question about, I didn't mean to be so close to the mic. When you discuss this, then, it, we're not, are we seeing the real amount here?
I have to think of a better way to explain this. Can you do it?
I can certainly try. So I think what Abby's trying to say is that, that the amount listed there, the 288, the 288,000, if the board were to grant longevity on the current salary schedule, if, if we were maintaining the current salary schedule, it would cost an additional $288,000. However, we don't have that same salary schedule. So in transitioning to the new salary schedule, if you grant that, it's not gonna cost $288,000 because, as Rich is saying, it will, it will increase everybody who should have gotten it, it will increase their pot for the formula transition that we talked about. But for many people, it's not gonna be enough to push them to the next level. So this is the real cost of what that amount is valued at. But when we plug it into the transition, there's many people where it won't be enough to push them up to the next one. So it really won't turn out to be this much money. Does that better?
Thank you.
So my question is, that was the list that we were going to include when we transitioned people. I just remember seeing that longevity was going to be included in that. And people, a lot of the staff had that question, was longevity going to be included? So if we vote on Option C, then it, then it would be.
I just want to make sure we're talking the same thing. So if they're currently receiving longevity in their paycheck, that's already part of the formula. This would be if they earned it this year, but didn't get paid because it's always a year, you earn it, and then you get paid at the following year? So, does that make sense?
It does, thank you. So we have, we have Option C on the floor. Any other discussion? Can we take a vote, then? Go ahead, Patty. Making Patty do these individual votes, I think it's important.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Epstein.
Commissioner Barsted?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
We move on, then, to, we don't, to approve the allowing credits completed by June 30th, 2016, if everybody hits the deadline. Any people want to move that to the floor, please?
Oh, move.
Moved by Commissioner Vu. A second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Spindler. Any discussion? Commissioner Luganbill?
Just curious what you think the ballpark of the cost would be on this? If you have any idea?
I have no idea. We do, these were, used to be called lane changes. And so we used to do them twice a year, I believe, yes. And so, they were just done as recently as January. But many people take spring classes and things that, you know, they finish their credits by June 30th. And so we don't really necessarily know who that is. And this would basically just be allowing them to turn it in now so that when we transition them, we can include those additional credits, since that's how the old salary schedule was based. And it could, I mean, I have no idea how many people, but it definitely could affect where they land on the new salary schedule.
Is there an, oh, I can always go first. Is there an average that has come up each year? No?
I think that, overall, that, that average would be skewed because as a result of the freezes that have occurred over the past several years, and the fact that lane movement wasn't a guarantee like it had been previously, many people in that employee group stopped taking credits because it costs so much to take them, and we weren't on the back end being able to compensate them to the point that it was making it relevant from a financial standpoint. So we've seen less and less over the past handful of years simply because of the freezes and not being able to kind of make up for that. So, I don't have an average number off the top of my head. All I know is that data-wise, it's been less as the years have gone on. And with employees not knowing that this was all coming to fruition, I don't think that it would be any different than we've seen in previous years where it's been fewer and fewer.
May I take, take it to a vote, then? Go ahead, Patty.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Barsted?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Okay. Extended administrator contract flexibility, move to approve extending the following contracts with an implementation date of either this July or July 1 of 2017. Anyone want to move it to the floor, please?
I'd say move.
Duhax moved, and Commissioner Luganbill second. Any, anybody have any input? Okay, go for a vote, please.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Barstad?
Yes.
Commissioner Duhax?
Yes. Okay, on to the National Board doctoral degree stipend. We have some options here as well. I would like to move option C to the floor, please.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Luganbill. Any discussion?
I don't believe the chair can sit and make a motion. The chair cannot make a motion. You have to hand over the gavel to the Vice President.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
It's not actually part of our policy to, some boards do practice that way.
If it's that way on the City Council, that's what I was going by.
Okay, yeah. We don't have that in our policy. There's nothing that prevents a president from doing that. Actually, I'm not sure, but if you prefer, it's up to you.
I can rescind the motion?
I will move adoption of option C.
And I'll second.
So, it was moved by Commissioner Luganbill, seconded by Commissioner Spindler for option C. Any discussion? Commissioner Spindler?
I've said this before, but both of these seem valuable to many employees. I would say the NBCT for teachers and the doctoral degree for administrators seems, doesn't cost much, and it seems very valuable to them, so it seems worthwhile.
Commissioner Luganbill?
My one comment on the NBCT is, I want to make sure, and I'm very comfortable voting for it tonight, but I want to make sure that we're really utilizing those employees, and giving them leadership roles, and giving them opportunities in the system. I'm not sure if we always fully utilize that, so I'm hoping that we can do that moving forward, and I think this is a clear way to solidify our support of that.
Any other discussion? Can we go for a vote, then, Patty, please?
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Epstein.
Commissioner Barstad?
Yes.
Commissioner Duhax?
Yes. Phew. Yay.
Almost done.
Almost done.
Thank you, President Hambach-Boyle, for running it nicely.
You're welcome. Okay, I got to find my agenda now, here again. The next thing on our agenda, then, would be, are we moving out of, we're going to adjourn to our committee and our committee report, so we need to, yeah.
Public comment, right? Is that, oh, never mind.
Okay. We are going on, then, to the referendum survey results. Right?
Can I ask, before we move on, if we can get a final number right now, on what the...
A final number on the cost?
Yeah, the cost plus the deficit.
Okay.
6.8. It's around approximately 6.8.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, are we all on the same page now? So, let's, the committee reports, our first committee report is the referendum survey results. Springstead.
Okay, so it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Don Lipto, and he's from Springstead. A couple of months ago, the board approved hiring Springstead to complete our community survey for the referendum, and so, he's with us tonight to present.
Good evening, members of the school board, and Dr. Hardbeck, it's good to be here again. I don't know if any of you were here in 2008, when I was presenting the survey results at that time, which was kind of at the beginning of a planning process that ended with a successful debt issuance referendum, I believe in 2010. So, happy to be back here again, going through your most recent survey results. I'll try to move along relatively quickly. You've had hard work and a long night already, but please feel free to interrupt me or slow me down if you want me to elaborate on something. This first slide just talks a little bit about the methodology and nature of the survey that you contracted for within the district. We completed 401 random sample interviews in late May into early June. That gives you a margin of error for your study of approximately plus or minus 4.9%. Easier math to be thinking plus or minus 5% as I go through things. So, if you see a particular data element that says that 60% of the people said the sky was blue, if you can just add 5% and subtract 5% from that number, that gives you the confidence band, and within that confidence band, there's a 95% chance that that represents the opinions of all registered voters within the school district. I always get questions about the size of the sample, and can you really learn anything with only 400? As Abby and I were talking about that, I shared some information from a national research center on this type of study, and if you were to listen to CNN, or NPR, or Fox News, or whatever your preferred media outlet is, and they were talking about a national survey of the entire country, the average number of interviews for that type of survey ranges from 1,000 to 1,200, out of maybe 200 million registered voters. So, a 400 sample in Eau Claire is a very substantial sample for the school district. In terms of who we called, as I said, this was a random sample survey, so if you're a registered voter and you live within the boundaries of the district, you had an equal chance to be called. However, we did impose demographic targets within that random sample survey, and I'll show you some slides that kind of explain what that means. The actual interviews we completed came very close to those targets, and cell phones were tracked, but they were not a demographic target, meaning we weren't charged with making sure that a certain percentage of the calls went to cellphone users. These first half a dozen slides or so give you a graphical look at what I mean when I say that the calls and the interviews were random sample interviews, but they were controlled for demography. So, what that means, in this particular slide, what you're seeing is the areas in blue represent the demographics of all registered voters living within the boundaries of the district. So, when you see blue, think of everybody, and the kind of burnt orange color next to it is the composition of who we actually interviewed. So, as I go through these first four, five, six slides, every one of these slides will look like this, and so, the extent to which the blue sections are roughly the same as the orange, it means that we successfully controlled for that demography. The goal of this, of course, is to make sure that we don't come back and have a sample that does not represent the demographics of the community as a whole. We want the sample to mirror the demographics as close as possible, to be more reliable. So, again, this is the male/female. Blue is everybody, orange is who we talked to. Same information geographically, in terms of the northern part of the district versus the southern part of the district. These are divided up by zip code. Here it's showing you that we talked to a wide range of ages, from our youngest registered voters up to our oldest registered voters. Now, these blue and the burnt orange are never going to be perfect, because they're random calls, they're computer-generated, multiple calls going on simultaneously, but you can just visually quickly see that we were successful in talking to a wide range of ages. This particular slide relates to the frequency of past voting behavior by the registered voters. So, a five out of five means that when we look back at the last five elections that took place within the boundaries of the school district, no matter what the purpose of the election laws, those individuals came and cast a ballot all five times. The four or five means they missed one, et cetera, for the rest of the targets. And parent households, this is very important in our methodology to make sure we don't oversample parents, particularly if the purpose of the study potentially might result in a proposal to increase taxes for a particular purpose. So, you can see in all of those targeted areas, while they were all randomly selected, we were successful in creating a mirror image with that sample of 401. Here's the cellphone information. We started tracking this about a year ago, because every time I present to a school board, somebody asks me, "What about cellphones?" And so, we just put it in here, so we don't have to respond to that anymore. We typically are seeing 30 to 40 to 45% cellphone interviews versus landline interviews. In terms of the methodology that I'll be reporting to you tonight, we use, and we used in 2008, what's called a three-benchmark test. And a very quick explanation of what you're going to see, with a three-benchmark test, we start with a very general question, which you have on the screen right now. It provides a little bit of information about what might be on the horizon, but not a lot of detail, not a lot of specifics, nothing about cost, for instance, and we get a general reaction. We call that the uninformed benchmark. Following that, we go through a series of prompts where we're giving people more information. If you knew that some of this money would be used to replace aging roofs, would that make you more or less likely to be supportive? If you knew that some of this money would be used for whatever. So, we go through typically eight, 10, 12, 14 prompts like that, with potential elements of what might be financed with a future referendum. Then, we come back and say, "We've told you a little bit more about this. Tell me again, what do you think?" And then, finally, we test tax tolerance. So, this is the uninformed initial general question. Would you favor or oppose such a proposal? And this is where the district started. At 60% favorable, that's a solid positive place to begin, particularly since people don't have a lot of detail or any knowledge yet about cost. So, a good place to start. So, again, once we did the uninformed benchmark, now we're going in providing additional information, and here you see on this slide and the next slide, a bar graph showing how people responded to specifics. So, starting at the top, for instance, question 11A talked about maintenance, and that question had a lot of specificity. It talked about roofs, and it talked about inefficient windows, and it talked about a lot of other potential maintenance projects that needed to be done. And so, after people heard that information, they were asked, "Would that make you more or less likely to be supportive, knowing that that's part of the potential plan?" And as you can see there, we were in excess of 70% support with that particular item. Now, you notice that item says 11A, and then about halfway down, you see 11B. That's called a split sample prompt, and with a split sample prompt, on, again, on a random basis, half of the people interviewed hear the 11A question, and half hear the 11B question. The difference between the two, in the 11B question, it just generally talked about needing to provide additional money for deferred maintenance, without talking about specifically roofs, windows, or whatever else was on the list. So, you can see right there, there was a significant difference in support, if people know specifically what you were talking about when you talked about maintenance. You can see there's also a 12A, 12B, and an 11A, 11B. These were all split sample questions, and in some cases, elements were added to the second prompt that provided a little more information. If you look at 10A and 10B, for example, 10A talked generally about needing to upgrade technology for the district and for student instruction. In 10B, it went on specifically to talk about age-appropriate handheld learning devices, such as an iPad or a Chromebook. So, here on these bar charts, you're seeing the percentage of people indicating they'd be supportive, based on that discrete piece of information. And as you can see, they're ranging from about 51% up to about 73. All of these on this slide were framed in a positive way. If there was additional funding provided, we would be able to do this. This set of, also the same type of questions, were more, if you want to think of it as a negative or a consequence of not having enough money. If we don't have enough resources, we're not going to be able to do this, or fully implement that. And, again, all of these were in excess of 50%, ranging up to a little north of 70. So, we started with our general question. We got that 60% response. Then, we went through specifics. Reach one, the person being interviewed told us whether they thought that was a good use of money or not, and then, we come back and say, "We've told you a little bit more about this potential referendum in the future. Tell me again, what do you think?" Oh, excuse me, I'm one slide ahead of myself. This one was talking about the fact that currently Eau Claire receives $357 less per student than the average for teaching and learning. If you were to know that, would that make you more or less likely to be supportive? And when people heard that information, about 2/3 said that would make them more supportive. So, that was a good, strong argument, if you want to think of it that way. And then, we had this prompt related to all those bar graph reports that I just went through with you. "We've told you a little bit more about this potential referendum in the future. Tell me again, what do you think?" And here, you're seeing the response after information at 59.9. It did increase a little bit, but back to the error of measurement, plus or minus 4.9%. The statisticians would tell you that they're basically the same. They're within the error of measurement. The third part of the three-benchmark methodology is to test specific tax consequences or impacts related to this potential proposal, and we work with your administrative staff to pick a range from low to high to test. We never know, of course, at the front end, if the range we pick is the right range. If all of them are too high, it doesn't really help you too much. In this particular case, it turned out that the range selected by your staff turned out to be a very good one, and you can see that in this particular line graph. What you're seeing here is the percentage of people who said they would be supportive of those three-dollar amounts, 75, 100, and 125. Now, when we can come back to a school board, and all the ones you select in your range are well above 50%, that's not a bad thing, but realistically, we're happy when two out of the three are within the range of what's feasible, and we didn't test a range that was either too low or too high. So, in your case, that middle number was kind of coming in right around that 50% number. Now, when we go through these on the phone, to avoid positional bias, the number that each individual hears first is randomly selected. So, if I were to call one person's house, they might hear the 125 first, and then the 75, and then they might hear the 100 last. Someone else might hear the 100 first, and then the 75, and the other ones. And by doing that, we avoid having the people being interviewed have an intuitive sense that we're stepping up or down the ladder, and then having that affect how they respond to the question, and we found that to be a more reliable methodology. This is a busy slide, but basically, it's just taking the data from here, and then disaggregating it into two groups. it into two groups, with the light blue group being the people who vote most frequently in Eau Claire over time. So those along that light blue line pretty much always get there and cast a ballot. Those along the burnt orange line are less likely voters, getting to the polls zero to two out of five. This also becomes somewhat of a proxy for age, meaning that the younger voters, 18 to 34, tend to be less frequent voters, and they also tend to be more supportive of school proposals. This also has some implications as you interpret it, when you're going to go on the ballot. And in a general election, if you're going to have a huge turnout, it's not as important as if you're all by yourself. The next set of slides just break down some of the data that I've been going through, but rather than seeing the overall number of all 400, you're seeing it broken down demographically. So in this first slide, this is the percentage of support we had from males and females after they got information. So this is not based on the first general question, but after we've gone through those dozen or so individual pieces of data, and we came back and asked them again, "What do you think?" That's what you're seeing here. What's common to Eau Claire from everywhere I've been and all 500 studies I've been involved with is females are more supportive than males. In terms of the percentages, it's typically probably a little bit larger than what you're seeing here, if you want to think of it as a gender gap or a gender difference. Typically, we see females somewhere between 8 and 12 percent more supportive than males. Your split is a little bit less than that, and that's probably a good thing. This is the information by location. I indicated that we separated the district north and south by zip code, so a little bit more support, as you can see, in the south. This is the same information by age group. Again, this is after people got information. Pretty typical profile of what we oftentimes see. And this is the profile by parent status. And when we talk parents here, we're talking about parents who have kids in school now, as compared to someone like me, where I live, where I used to have kids in school, but not In addition to the referendum feasibility analysis within this study, we also had some qualitative questions. One of them that we always use is the Phi Delta Kappa Gallup poll. And essentially, with the Phi Delta Gap, Kappa Gallup survey, people are told, "You're the teacher for the day. Give your local public schools a grade, A, B, C, D, and F." And this is how people in Eau Claire responded to that, very, very positive. And what we look at in particular is the ratio of, you know, As and Bs to Bs and Fs. And I didn't do the exact math on this, but I think it exceeds 10 to 1 in terms of the percentages of As and Bs versus Bs and Fs. So that was a very positive finding. And then here, what we're doing is taking your data, which is in the blue, and comparing it to the National Phi Delta Kappa Gallup poll, which asked exactly the same question. And it is an apples-to-apples, because even in the national sample, people are not being asked to grade the national schools, they're asked their local schools. And as you can see, many more As and Bs compared to the national sample, so certainly a positive We asked people why they gave their grade or the primary basis of their grade. They were given six options that were presented randomly. And you can see here that the top three, at 33 percent, my kids' experiences, followed by 18 percent personal experience, and 17 percent other. And we'll have to go into another document to see what those specific comments were. We asked the same thing of parents of current kids, and as you can see with that, the orange section on my kids' experience exploded, as you might expect it to, to almost 60 percent of their response. We also asked people how they would judge the financial management of the school district. This is never as positive as the overall grade anywhere, but in your case, it was very positive. I think your ratio was somewhere around three, between three and four to one, you know, positive to negative. The biggest thing we see pretty much everywhere is the light green, or excuse me, the "I don't know" typically runs almost 25 percent. But remember, somewhere around 85 percent of the people taking this survey don't have kids currently at school, so that should not be surprising. We also need to remember that what we read in the paper and hear on the radio or see on TV about school finances is not overly rosy, and so a lot of people would get their perceptions in that way. So generally positive and typical, but we see in a good district. One of the prompts that we typically do when it's for the purpose of referendum feasibility is not a question, but reacting to a statement. "I would not vote for any tax increase of any kind for any purpose." And then people are asked if they strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree with that statement. What we're looking for there is the size of the immovable block, and to what extent your community could be characterized as, you know, tax adverse, for lack of a better word. What we typically see, and I'm narrowing in on the blue and the orange here at 13 percent, we typically see a range of roughly 15 to 25 percent strongly agreeing with that. So you're on the low, the low end of the average range, I guess I would frame it. And so certainly, there isn't a fundamentally bad environment, you know, within which to operate as compared to other school districts. We also asked about the primary source of information. You can see local, actually, four different sources were very, very close. The local paper, radio, TV, friends and neighbors, and teachers and staff, all were in those low 20s. We also asked that identical question in 2008. So in this particular case, we were able to compare the results in 2008 to the results in 2016. And as you can see, the biggest change visually that you just see right away is somewhat less reliance on the newspaper, and 2016 is in the blue.
Could I ask, was there anything about social media on that with the sources of information?
No. What you're seeing is what was actually, well, there's district website, but not specifically Facebook or Twitter or anything like that. Now, we might have picked up a few comments like that in the other.
Will we get access to the other, to the comments? Good.
In terms of the findings of our study, generally speaking, we would characterize that there's a healthy support for a future bond or revenue cap referendum. I'm using bond kind of interchangeably with debt issuance, so whether it's a combination of revenue cap and debt issuance, a healthy level of support. When we started at 56.6, that was that first uninformed prompt. People got information, it moved to 59.9. Information impact was negligible, and that means that the change was inside the error of measurement. Respondents were given 10 statements about potential improvements, uses of the money in the future. All were over 50 percent support, five were over 65 percent. The highest one related specifically to maintenance projects with the specificity that I referenced earlier, as you can see on this particular slide. In terms of the four statements about potential negative impacts of not having additional resources, in general, they had a smaller effect on respondents, a little bit better response to positive statements, but all still were in that 55 to 65 percent range, including those that were related to compensation, which we're obviously working on tonight. As I mentioned, the three tax impacts we tested turned out to be a good range, and all of those were projected on a $100,000 home value. And support above 50 percent was seen within that, within that range, which is what you're looking for. What we would recommend as a planning parameter, if you will, is to keep the impact of your eventual proposal at or below $90 on a $100,000 home. And that's basically looking along that line graph, seeing at what point we're hitting 50 percent plus one, and then pulling you back a little bit out of that plus or minus 4.9 percent error of measurement. Now, does that mean that you couldn't run something at 95 and win? No. It also doesn't mean you couldn't lose at 85. It's a planning parameter, not an absolute rock-solid number. That having been said, the further north you go from that, the thinner the ice, and the extent to which you back off from that somewhat, you're buying yourself a little bit of margin. And particularly with our school clients who are facing a potential referendum in the middle of a toxic presidential election, there's some reason to give yourself some Jerry Dutzik has been working closely with Abby, as well as myself. And typically, when we do these presentations, I'll have three or four questions from the superintendent by the time in home or the next day. And so if you do have questions that aren't dealt with tonight, in the middle of a busy board meeting, please share them, and we'll get back to you with additional information as soon as we possibly can. Someone referenced other things other than what you're seeing here. Your administrative staff has been provided additional documents, and there also will be things that are forthcoming. And obviously, Springfield would be pleased to help you understand and use those as best we can. Questions tonight?
Commissioner Spindler, we've got some, so go ahead.
Yeah, good, thanks. I had questions early on about your target population. Was that the population? Was it just adults in Eau Claire?
Registered voters living within the boundaries of the school.
Registered voters. Okay, good. So the slide, I think it was page five, that you had, you know, they only voted in one or two or three. Was that any election, like spring or fall, or?
The last five elections, no matter what they were.
Oh, okay. Okay, so if they voted in one in the first five, they'd been in the one column.
That's correct.
So it didn't distinguish between the fall and spring? Okay, thanks.
That information, though, is readily available if and when it's needed, if you're looking at who participates in a particular type of election.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Lugner?
I'm just curious what the response was, because I would assume that with some of the respondents, they would maybe ask for clarification, or when you're talking like in the question about buildings, they maybe would say, "Well, what buildings?" or whatever. So was that something that you ran into, and how was that addressed by the company?
I don't have any specific information to respond to your question, other than to tell you that that's part and parcel of all of these studies. There are people who ask clarifying questions, and if the person's able to respond, they do. If they can't, they typically will give the my phone number or the superintendent's phone number, so there's a way to get your question answered. I only hear about it if it's a problem. And we do field test these before we start collecting the data. So occasionally, we'll field test it, and we'll get a lot of questions on a particular question that'll prompt us to revise it before we go into the field. And so I didn't hear anything about problems with your study, so I assume it was just what it typically was.
Commissioner Vu.
Two questions. The first question is, do you have any specific recommendation for us regarding the things that we can compensate? Like, for example, the older population were the most high-turnout voter, but they are also most reserved about increasing tax. And then you also point out ideas about where information was received through what channel, and it seems that more people are hearing about it, but less information was received through leaded telegram or newspaper. What suggestion do you have for our specific need in Eau Claire?
In regard to your first question, the longer survey report, not the PowerPoint, but the longer detailed report, provides you with detailed responses by demography. So while I would be going through a PowerPoint and say that 62 percent of people thought it was a great idea to fix the roofs, you can go into that long, detailed report and say, "What did men say versus women? What did young people say versus older people? What did people in the north of the district say versus the south? What did people say who always vote versus those who don't? What did parents say versus non-parents?" So that's where you'll find, you know, the demographic detail that will help you understand who you need to engage with, who needs what kind of information. And what you'll find when you look at that is that while older adults, high age or older, might be less supportive overall, when you go through that detailed report, you may find that you're wildly supportive of a particular element of the proposal. And so knowing how people responded based on all those demographic characteristics is helpful in planning your communications and your information if indeed the board decides to move forward with this. In terms of where people get their information, about one presentation out of 30 or 40 that I do, the number one spot where people get their information is from the school district. So when we see that at the top as the number one source of information, that's an ideal situation. And so whatever you can do to move from where you are towards being kind of the dominant source is a very, very good thing. And some districts will, you know, part of a strategic plan really work on that in a, you know, planful manner. But knowing where people tend to get their information, also by demography, where do old people get their information, where do young people get their information, is very helpful in your broad communication planning, whether or not you're running a referendum or not. And a lot of that detail, again, is in that longer report.
Commissioner Dux.
I was particularly interested in the north-south thing and thinking about the way the information is spread and what is discussed, you know, on one side of town opposed to the other side of town. Do you have anything else that you could add to that?
Only what's similar to my previous response. You know, you're going to be able to go into that more detailed report and see every single question how people responded, you know, north and south. And so it's going to give you, you know, more detail than I can do in 30 minutes of a PowerPoint. One question I didn't get, and I'll answer it anyway, in terms of language. In this particular study, we contracted for providing translation by certified translators of the survey instrument into both Mongh and Spanish. We didn't have a quota where, you know, we told the call center, "You've got to find at least this many of a particular group." We had the questionnaire ready to go in those two languages, and people... We had the questionnaire ready to go in those two languages, and people trained people there, ready to do the interviews for anyone who needed Spanish or Mong language interpretation. And I think we had, it was ten or eleven Abby that were done in other than English.
I have one more question. Do you normally, you know, when you do the survey, because you do lots of these, do you see compensation so high on the list?
It's not, it's not an area, I would say, that is frequently included in a survey. You know, as I said, if we've done five hundred of these in the last twenty years, you know, maybe ten of them, you know, that was included. But it just depends on the life cycle of the district. Where are you at as a district? What issues are you dealing with? And particularly, if you've gone through an extended study of compensation, which culminated in some important decisions tonight, that was very relevant to ask. There were four different questions in the survey related to compensation. They all were a little different, but they all gave you a little bit of a snapshot into how people were responding. And generally speaking, it was, I would characterize it as fairly encouraging.
Anyone else? Commissioner Spindler?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I was, I was a little surprised at how high that was. I was also surprised how low compared to the others' class size was, kind of contrary to my expectations. But my question, isn't really a question, more of a comment, was about the information piece, where they get their information, I think is really important for us in this case, because, you know, we're going into a very high-volume, high-noise election, and it will be very hard for us to overcome that high-noise election. And so not only is this piece important, but actually how you worded the question, because there will be, no matter what we do, there'll be a high percentage in a general presidential election, a high percentage of people who will never have seen it until they walk into that booth. And so the impression of that question will be so important for this election compared to, say, a spring election or something. And I, would that be accurate?
You could be teaching my workshop with me on that point. When we talk about preparing for a general election, particularly this one, the two things we talk about when Springsteen is doing training is, one, you've got to start sooner, do more, and more broadly, and I'm talking about communications. Start sooner, do more, and more broadly. The start sooner is to try to get information out before the loudest of the noise happens, which is kind of starting already. And secondly, on your other point, while it can't be done, your goal should be that no voter walks in not already having the information and decided how they're going to vote. Because in the absence of having information, thinking about it, knowing what your point of view is, there's nothing in the ballot language that's going to be helpful.
I wanted to give an example, because we talked about that in our legislative report tonight, and this is just a comment, but when they put out the referendum on the transportation money two years ago, anybody who read it who didn't know said, "Oh, that sounds good." And I think a lot of the reason that passed was exactly what you said, "That sounded good, you know, they should blah, blah, blah," not knowing the impact on other pieces within the budget when that, in fact, was going to happen. And I bet there's people in this room who did vote for it even because they didn't look at it deeply enough. So, point very well taken.
And I shouldn't address this as a twenty-five-year superintendent, but I've probably voted in a dozen referendums. I've never read the ballot language in the voting booth, because I already knew about it, I knew what the money was for, I knew why I was supporting it, I knew I was voting yes, I was voting yes. And so very few people actually wade through that language, which is why it's so important to get the information before they are in the voting booth. Other questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Lufte.
If we stay with the same cycle, I'll see you back here in two thousand...
No, we're working, we're working very hard on changing Wisconsin school funding.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Duex. Sorry.
I'm sorry. It's getting late. I just wondered who is going to go through all the minutia of the survey?
Well, initially, the exec team will review the survey, but we'll also share that with the board and with budget development.
Good, we have one more survey to go. Michelle, I see you coming up here. It's our student engagement survey results. And then after this, we are going to take a five-minute, maybe recess, and we have a, like, a twenty-minute work session. I just really need you around the table, if that's okay, and we'll get you out of here, okay?
Good evening. I am Michelle Ragian, I'm the Director of Assessment for the school district, and tonight I'm going to report on the results or the findings from the two thousand fifteen, sixteen Student Engagement Survey. This survey was administered to all students in grades five through twelve, and this is our third year of administration for this survey. And it happened in the spring of this year. First of all, we are going to develop a common understanding of what student engagement is, as defined by K-12 Insight. And so they define student engagement as the connection that students have with their school and their studies. They separate student engagement into two separate categories, one being cognitive engagement, and they define that as the quality of students' psychological engagement in academic tasks and activities. The second area in student engagement is social and emotional engagement, and they define that as the process through which students acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. The survey aligns with our strategic plan, and it also provides data to help the district focus on both two main areas, academic achievement, and that is signified by cognitive engagement in the survey, and then student social and emotional growth, which is signified by student social and emotional engagement. I am happy to say that our participation rate over the last three years has increased. And so in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, it was at ninety-two percent. We increased that percentage in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, to ninety-five percent. And in this year, current year, we have increased it to ninety-seven percent. This survey provides insight from the students that are sitting in our classrooms, whether or not our current practices are working. With ninety-seven percent of rate with this data, it can truly act as a flashlight to guide us to what the district should do next. Next, we're going to look at a little comparison data. So if we look at two thousand fourteen, fifteen, in cognitive engagement, so I want to point that out, this is in cognitive engagement. Our weakest engagement score in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, for grades five through eight was class experience, and especially in the area of my classes are challenging. In grades nine through twelve, the weakest area in last year's survey was relevance, and that is, I see how what I'm learning in school relates to the outside world. The strongest engagement score in cognitive engagement in grades five through twelve was the same, and that was academic support. Academic support being, my teachers encourage me to do my best. Then we look at the fifteen, sixteen data, a little comparison. And in grade five, it did not change, it stayed the same. They still reported their weakest engagement score in grade five to be class experience. It did change for grades six through eight, and they now are reporting that relevance is the weakest area. So grades six through twelve, relevance was the weakest engagement score in cognitive engagement. The strongest engagement score, there was no change, it remained at academic support. Then we move to social and emotional engagement. And in social and emotional engagement, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, the weakest engagement score for grades five through eight was relationship management, particularly in the area of, outside of class, I interact with students other than my friends. In grades nine through twelve, the weakest engagement score in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, was acceptance, specifically in, I am recognized for contributing to this school. The strongest engagement score for fourteen, fifteen, in grades five through twelve was the same for all grades, and that was self-management, and that being, I am nice to my teachers, as an example. Now, as we look at the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, our weakest engagement score had a little change in it. So grades five through eight, the weakest score stayed the same, it remained constant, and that being relationship management. In grades nine through ten, there was, it was a tie between two, and that being acceptance and relationship management. So acceptance stayed the same, but relationship management was added. And then in, for grades eleven and twelve, acceptance was the weakest engagement score. Of all of them? Yeah? Okay, so an example of relationship management would be, outside of class, I interact with students other than my friends. Acceptance, I am recognized for contributing to this school. And then self-management would be, I am nice to my teachers, would be an example. We're going to take a little global overview of our overall engagement. So I'm going to just take a brief overview of understanding this graph. The lighter portion of the graph are the two thousand fourteen, fifteen results, with the darker portion being the fifteen, sixteen results. The white numbers in the graph signify the fourteen, fifteen numbers, and then the big black numbers at the top are the fifteen, sixteen data. Does that make sense? Okay. One of the, so a couple of things that I want to point out, this is a four-point scale with the engagement scores, and our goal as a district is to achieve it at a three-point oh level. So if we look at the district's overall score, we have increased by point zero five, and we are above that goal of three-point oh. One of the things that we do see in all engagements, as we start breaking this down, is a downward trend. As kids get older, the engagement gets less. And so you will notice that there is a downward trend here, and you will also notice that downward trend as we move on. But one of the things that I do want to point out is the high school grades eleven through twelve, which is the yellow bar. We made a significant increase in that, those grade levels, grades eleven through twelve, from fourteen, fifteen to fifteen, sixteen. One of the things that I can tell you is that anytime we have intentional focus, it has positive impacts on students. One of the things that the high school implemented this year was intentional focus on student engagement. And so those results, I believe, show that. Next, we're going to break it down, so we're going to keep desegregating this data. So this one is broken, the left is the cognitive engagement, and the right is the social and emotional engagement. I'm going to start with the social and emotional engagement. And if we look here, going back to my, what I said previously, is that three-point oh is a goal for our district. You'll notice that in social and emotional engagement, every single grade level is above that three-point oh goal, with our district being at a three-point one-eight. As we move over to cognitive engagement, you'll notice on both of these, there is a downward trend again. You'll notice grade five, it gets less as we get to eleven and twelve. But as we get to the lower grades, we are at a two-point nine in cognitive engagement for overall district, but in the high school grades nine through ten, and grades eleven through twelve, we are below that three-point oh. So this would be an area of focus for our district, district is the cognitive engagement at the high school. Some examples of ways that we could increase or improve our student engagement practices could include, in the cognitive area, student voice and choice in learning, cognitively challenging activities, culturally appropriate instruction. In both areas, we could use a strategic use of technology, which would enhance rigor, relevance, and relationships in student learning. And then if we look at social and emotional, we could multiple meaningful relationships to extend the feeling of belonging and safe learning environments where students are allowed to mistakes. Those are just a few of ways that we could, we could look at ways to improve. We're going to start desegregating the data more, and so we can look a little deeper into this. And this is all as a district overview. And so the next one, we move into cognitive engagement. Cognitive engagement is broken up into four areas, academic support, student experience, relevance, and class experience. Here's where you can kind of tell where we fall short of what we have to work on. So we're really strong in the academic support, and an example of academic support would be, my teachers include me in classroom discussions, encourage me to do my best, and they do not give up on me. If you look at areas that fall below the three-point oh, student experience, relevance, and class experience, examples of this would be in student experience, our school helps me discover my strongest skills. Relevance, I see what I'm learning in school relates to the outside world, and class experience being, my classes are fun, interesting, and challenging. As we looked a little deeper into this data, one of the things that we did find is feedback. There was a question on there in feedback, and looking at the grade level and school, a lot of students, most students, were communicating that they do not receive feedback within a twenty-four-hour span of handing in that assignment. But what we have found through research is that feedback is one of the most powerful factors implicated in academic learning and achievement. Feedback enables a student to move forward, to plot, to plan, to adjust, to rethink. And so feedback works because the goal is known and accurately defined through realistic assessment. So this would be an area, as we dig deeper, we can really look at the feedback portion, and how does that relate to the students in our classroom, to improve in that area. Then we're going to move on to the social and emotional engagement. And social and emotional, remember, in our district-wide, we were above the three-point oh goal, and in all grade levels, we were above the three-point oh goal. We're now breaking it down into the sections within social and emotional. So if you look in the upper-left-hand corner, we have self-awareness, and we're going to break down from self-awareness and social awareness. This is self-awareness. So in self-awareness, in all areas, we are above the three-point oh goal, but, and we have seen an increase in all areas except for future aspirations, we had a little decrease, but not, not significant decrease. But examples of self-awareness, I'll give you examples, self-management, very high, and that showed up as a strength. That would be, I am nice to my classmates and teachers, I follow school rules. Future aspirations would be, I feel good about my future opportunities and future success. I believe that I will be successful in a career that interests me. As we dip down to the lower ones with self-awareness, involvement, an example of that would be, I come prepared, or come to school prepared, I do my best in school, and I participate in class activities and discussions. And examples of persistence are, I'm willing to try new activities, and I'm patient when trying those activities.
Okay. Michelle, can these be disaggregated down according to race, gender?
Yep. Yep, they give us that.
Okay. I'd be interested to know what the cultural differences are.
Then we move into the second section of social and emotional engagement, which is social awareness. What you will recognize here is, for the most part, we are above the three-point oh goal, but we do fall a little shy in acceptance and relationship management. So relationship with adults and relationship with peers. I want to point out, the relationship with peers had a significant increase, it had a point-one increase from last year to this year. So examples of acceptance would be, I have a lot in common with other students at the school, I am recognized for contributing to this school, I feel respected and accepted at this school. And then relationship management examples would be, in class, I work with students other than my friends, and I spend time with at least one friend from outside, from outside, outside of school hours. Next steps. Our next steps would be to share and review the survey results with building and district leadership teams, to continue to refine the school improvement plans in the area of student engagement at each site, and work in the, work in this area may include identifying and implementing strategies to increase cognitive engagement. And these were our two weak areas, in grades five, the class experience, and in grades six through twelve, relevance. And really digging deep into that... six through 12, relevance, and really digging deep into that data to, what is it about relevance, and what is it about the classroom experience that we want to focus in on for our school improvement plan? And that may be different school to school. So that would have to, you know, come from, from within the school. And then the second one is identifying and implementing strategies to increase social and emotional engagement, especially in the area of social awareness. Grades five through 10, looking at relationship management, and grades nine through 12, looking at acceptance.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Ludenbill?
I would have asked the same question Commissioner Hammack Boyle did about the race. I'd love to see that information, that breakdown. I'm curious, in, in any of our surveys as a system, have we explored in the coming years to have a section where students can self-identify as LGBTQ? Specifically, I think it'd be interesting to know, the cognitive engagement, the social and emotional engagement, especially when we're hearing concerns about how students are being bullied or maybe not in a safe environment. So I'm wondering if you could touch on that.
We have not in the past, but it may be an option for the future.
Commissioner Dwyer.
Well, I think it's interesting that you said where we have fallen down, meaning teachers, principals.
District does a whole.
It's, you know, some of it belongs in the students realm, too. I know in interviewing students for, to serve on the board, they told us quite a bit about themselves. Do they have that opportunity in school to talk about themselves very much, or is it all focused? I mean, I, it's a rhetorical question, of course, but...
Yeah, I think, I think it truly depends on the teacher.
If it's all focused on academics, then they don't have that opportunity to talk about themselves.
And that's where the relationship with teachers comes into play, and I think it is that culture that is built within the classroom of whether or not they're, they're able to show their true colors within that classroom. So it's a sense of belonging that they have within that culture.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yeah, question, this is all student perception data, right?
Self-reporting.
Yeah, so question is the accuracy. I could see some being accurate and some, I wonder about. My student says I'm persistent, however you might ask. Have you looked at other models or metrics to use besides a student self-perception data, for at least some of these?
We have not at this point, but it could be an option, you know?
I know some are out there, you know, like PK, right?
Yep.
Yep, it's preschool uses, DAKA, where it's a teacher-reported.
Right.
And parent-reported.
And parent-reported, yes.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I, I know we have limited resources, but I just wonder about the accuracy of a student self-reporting.
So we are looking at...
For some of these characteristics.
Right, we are looking at, at measures that are reported, or that are evaluated by staff members. However, when you're dealing with, student perception is actually very, very accurate because it's from their perspective and what the experience that they're having, and really when we're getting up to 97 percent, we're getting a really solid perspective on the student experience.
Yeah, I could, I can see that, but student experience is one thing, but let's just, I'll just take persistence. I know students at the college level say they're persistent, and they are not. Right? You know? And, and so there's a difference between what is and what is perceived. And the perceived is very important for students, especially on their experience.
And we are looking at other tools to do that, like in, as President Hammack Boyle mentioned, the tool that's used in early learning does actually have measures for grades well beyond early learning, all the way up into high school. So we are looking at some of those.
That's good, okay. That's just what...
And there are some used in pockets with, like our school psychologists use some also, but not to the whole student body. So that would be another.
And a sample, maybe enough, if you've got a good sample, right? So...
And at the elementary level, there is, there are evaluations on the report card, where teachers weigh in on certain characteristics that are associated with social and emotional growth and with the whole child.
Commissioner Vu.
Maybe this might be a premature question, but I, I am just curious, how much of this student engagement is aligned or relate or relevant to previous district goal for students? If it's not relevant, can that be a consideration for future feedback that align with district goals for students?
So, to clarify, are you, like, are strategic priorities? It is aligned through the academic support, I mean, our academic learning and our, our social and emotional. I would guess, I would say that there is a direct correlation between those two.
But intentionally, or it just happened to be?
I would say it just happened to be. So you, like, okay, so you may want, we may want to go through the questions, but we did, when we were reviewing the questions for the survey this year, we did look at it through that eye of our strategic plan and the questions. So we kind of vetted some questions through the survey as we administered it this year.
And Commissioner Vu, when you talk about intentionally, I think there is an intentional part there, because each of the schools has a school improvement goal that is targeted toward engagement. And that engagement piece is about not only engagement in the achievement areas or the cognitive areas, but it's also in the social and emotional area as well. So each of the schools, depending on their context and the needs of their students, have developed strategies that they're working on to engage students and to address these things. So in that area, it is intentional to our strategic plan.
And, and just from last year to this year, with, I talked about that intentional focus at the high school, that also happened at some of our elementaries, that they did spend a lot of time and a lot of PD on engagement, and you noticed that in the schools. As we desegregate the data by school, you can tell the ones that were pretty intentional with their professional development for engagement. Yep.
I, I think it would be fun to see some of the specifics on that, not that we're in charge of that, because you are, but I think, as a board member, I think that would be fun for us to see what that, what that was.
Yeah, okay. I'll get that.
Anybody else? Anybody from the audience have comments on the last two committee reports, the referendum survey or the student engagement survey results? Didn't think so, but I had to ask. Yes, Dr. Hartebeck?
I think the, the feedback from the surveys is very encouraging for our work on the strategic plan, because we are seeing that our trends are moving forward, we're making improvements in both areas. We often talk about the emphasis on the whole child, and when you look at our social and emotional scores, those are, that's our strength, you know, as a district. I think where we have some work to do as a district is in like cognitive engagement and continuing to see the development and the improvements in social and emotional continue, but to recognize that that is our strength as a district.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? I, I, we're going to go now into our work session, quick. We can either go quick, and maybe I can do it in 10 minutes, or do you need a break? Ready to get done? Okay, do I have to do a motion to go to work session? No? Let's, let's do it.
I don't need a break, we can go.
Okay. Yeah, let's go. Take your agenda, I think that's all you need.
This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.ccbtv.org.